Work. Commissioner Hodge, I'll thank you for leading us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands in its hands, one nation, one hundred odd indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, let's take the ones on the agenda. Onto the minutes, uh, is there discussion, a motion to approve for last meeting's minutes?
I'll move as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Next up, we have our calendar, is there any discussion, any comments, any adjustments?
There are none.
She nor do I, we move on then to previously signed documents. Discussion, questions, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Next up, Sheriff Ryan Searle was the department. Bill, it's great to see you.
Good evening. Did everybody receive the packet okay?
I believe so, if not, we'll do so.
So you guys should be back in winter even once.
What it feels like. That's all right, it'll be summer long soon enough.
Other months.
Right?
Yeah.
After bicycle. Yeah, after Bike Week, right?
Right.
Normally when it stops snowing. Well, I'm uh, I'm pleased to be before you to, to give you this uh, quarterly update. It's been uh, it's been a little while, I think the last time we did it was at least three or four months ago, so. Uh, this is pretty good, I uh, in this packet, I gave you a staff and report that shows um, basically that we have fifty-one employees on the roster, uh, some of those are civilians, some of them are uh, sworn bailiffs and deputies, um, and administrative assistant, civil clerk. So we're doing very well with uh, with staffing, we don't have any uh, necessarily vacancies. Uh, as always, I, I'm always looking for uh, part-time dispatchers and part-time bailiffs, uh, per diem bailiffs, just to uh, help augment our current staffing. Um, we've had numerous projects, as you know, I've come before you uh, before. Uh, one of them is uh, through the Communications Division, the Radio Tower Project. Uh, we're fully operational with two simulcast LMR uh, radio channels. And we have one simplex radio channel, which means um, ultimately, we have two channels that are on repeaters, so all eight towers broadcast at the same time. And then uh, the simplex channel is uh, basically point-to-point, so we have one antenna for that. Uh, but all three are working uh, flawlessly right now. Our IMC consolidation project, uh, right now, we have uh, full connections established to Alton, Barnstead, Belmont, Center Harbor, Gillington, New Hampton, San Bernand, Tilton. So basically, all the, the towns that we dispatch for all of the time or some of the time. Uh, we still have planned aware connections, which is uh, it's a, not so much interactive, but more of a display um, of the calls that we're currently on, as well as the other departments uh, with Guilford, Laconia, and Meredith. Uh, it's the, so I know that one of the departments has been in contact with our IT, as well as uh, the IT from uh, IMC, which is our company that we, we get our CAD and records management from. Uh, we're still waiting on Laconia and Meredith to uh, to connect. But uh, but that should be uh, in a short uh, period. The data conversion, which is uh, all the data previous to our live connection with the departments. So everything from the start of time, if you will, uh, when they use that, that uh, software till, till the connection, uh, all that data conversion is still scheduled and targeted to be completed by uh, September twenty twenty-five. And uh, we're continuing on our ongoing training uh, for the connected agencies. So again, there's a learning curve because we see theirs, uh, we can put ourselves in their calls, they can put themselves in our calls, there's uh, some learning curves there, uh, but it's a completely live system, so the data is real, uh, it's live. If a department had to shut down their, their uh, communication system for a period of time, uh, we can easily assume that or vice versa. So um, it's a really good cooperative process. Um, we've uh, the desk in the center itself, uh, which we have all new floor tiles down, ceiling tiles, lights. Uh, the consulate desks are set up, the walls have been painted. Uh, and dispatch is operational right now with three fully functioned, functional terminals. Uh, where we are still working on setting up the fourth terminal, it's uh, it, then the fourth terminal is more for a supplement. Um, and we're looking at uh, scheduling a time for an open house and dedication, probably sometimes in, in June, after the center is completely optimized. So right now, we still have a few wires here and there and things that we're still working on. Uh, and again, getting that fourth uh, terminal set up in place. But we'll make sure that the commissioners are all invited to that, uh, as well as other key uh, people who are involved in either helping us secure the money or, or being part of the whole process uh, altogether. Uh, our command post, again, it's been uh, you, you already know it's been totally retrofitted and updated and updated and so on and so forth. Uh, we've already started using it, uh, we've been to a couple SWAT calls, uh, we've had a couple department assists, and one example of that was uh, the Pond Hockey Classic, uh, which we left right in Meredith and showed Meredith PD how to use it. They basically had full, full control of it during the time that they needed it there. Uh, we have several scheduled uh, bunch of truck events, so the community can see what uh, what it is and how it works. And uh, we kind of like that hands-on approach, so uh, we're gonna have a very busy summer with that, uh, with the bunch of trucks, so that's pretty nice. Our courthouse, uh, ultimately, uh, the holding was uh, rebuilt and it's proven to be uh, very useful. It's very user-friendly and the employees actually really enjoy being in there. So the days of having to be stuck in the basement are pretty much over, they don't mind tuning it now and it's, the climate control is uh, huge. Uh, just being down there, it's clean. And that's one of the biggest things that they've said to me is, it's just clean, you know, it's, it's no longer feeling like they're in a dungeon, a dungeon. Um, we're still looking at uh, getting the cameras replaced, that's through the Administrative Office of the Courts. Uh, I'm updated at least on a monthly basis to the sheriffs, uh, in the New Hampshire Sheriff's Association. We have uh, the AOC representative come in and talk to us uh, at the meetings. And uh, we just had one last week and I was informed that uh, that the cameras are still, you know, we're on cue for, for the camera replacement. So that'll be good. Uh, today, we took uh, the installation of the, the newest technology on the megtometer, as well as the X-ray machine. So they were installed um, right in the front, right when you come in. Uh, it's still kind of uh, disarrayed because there's some wiring and things that we, we found with some of the components that we have in there, uh, that we're gonna have to deal with and I'm working with uh, with our maintenance chief on that, so John, John and I are working on that. Uh, we're still updating uh, emergency procedures and that, you know, we're gonna continue to develop them with the different things that happen like uh, bomb threats and gas leaks and all that, so as, you know, it's a continual uh, process and each process is uh, is its own separate uh, function. So we're gonna continue to develop those. Uh, the twenty twenty-five uh, New Hampshire Highway Safety Grant, uh, it's still being currently worked by all of our staff and will continue to be worked until the end of it, uh, which is the end of September. Uh, we're not having any problems filling um, the requirements, so state actually sets forth certain dates that we are required to uh, participate. Uh, Bike Week is one of them and they're doing uh, DWI saturation, saturation patrols. Uh, so you know, the public that's watching, uh, we will be out full force during the week of Bike Week, uh, doing specific uh, DWI patrols. Uh, all fully funded by the New Hampshire Highway Safety. Um, all of our fleet has been, uh, all of our fleet cruisers have been updated with new mobile data terminals, as well as uh, citation printers. So uh, we have twelve cars now that are out there with um, well, two cars are still pending because they're, they're randomly sitting, sitting down with the dealership right now, so um, so we have ten cars that are completely outfitted. We have the other two cars that are pending the installation. Um, so that's been pretty good. Our statistical data, uh, I supplied you with uh, with a listing of uh, what we have for statistical data. Uh, as it sits right now, we're pretty much on par with what we did last year, there's a few uh, overage areas and a few under areas. Uh, so again, it fluctuates based on the call volume. Um, I do want to point out that uh, so far, Communication Division, they've managed over fifty-five thousand uh, calls for service, log notes and assignment changes. So uh, and that, so it's up a little bit, um. And that's, that's without, um, if you remember, we severed, or, or Norfield severed ties with our dispatch center. So for us to be uh, even higher is not a bad thing at this given point. Uh, we're continuing our advanced dispatcher training courses, uh, as well as emergency management, supervisory related uh, courses of study. Uh, again, we, we find it, the uh, importance that we're, we are now over the brand-new employee phase. Uh, and we've had stability uh, in the dispatch center, so now it's time to start getting the advanced training, which is what we're, we're keying up on. Our Court Division, uh, they, those guys down at the courthouse, there's, they're running uh, two courtrooms on a regular basis. Uh, I just found out that our, our sitting judge, um, she's on vacation right now for the next couple weeks, so uh, they've brought in another judge. But that other judge is normally the person that is involved in the second court, courtroom, so I'm not sure if they're gonna bring in another judge to, to continue two courtrooms or not, but uh, but they are uh, running steady business down there. Um, our Circuit Court has seen an influx of activity due to the first hearings to repeal the felonies first. So again, uh, where we might see a decrease at the uh, Superior Court level, we're finding that it's an increase at the, at the Circuit Court level, so it's, it's kind of evening out for our personnel. Uh, so we're not, we have not needed additional personnel to cover that. Um, I continuously get letters from defense attorneys, uh, our county attorney's office, and uh, in the community, just people interacting in the courthouse, uh, for the excellence of service that our people are providing up there, they're constantly saying that they're helpful. And that's, that's the key, right, so when I became the sheriff, that was one of the things that I really wanted to do was get into this job to continue to be helpful to be. And that's exactly what they're doing, it's been phenomenal, uh, so it's very impressive. And I always make sure that the employees get a copy of everything that I get, uh, as well as hanging up on our bulletin board in our lunchroom, so every deputy that goes in there gets the opportunity to see it. Our budget, um, I did provide you with some budget information, uh, this is about a, a few days old. So I, I submit, I wrote this up on the twelfth, so it's changed over the last, uh, you know, a few days, but overall, um, we're at twenty-six thousand uh, six hundred and two dollars, fifty cents for the revenue for outside details. Uh, we started, um, a couple of my employees that work for local PDs, they came in and talked about revenue for DWI bench warrant service. So when we're out um, making arrests on bench warrants and it's DWI-related, if we submit those arrests to the state, they'll actually reimburse us for doing that. And uh, and, and even though it's not a, it's not a big ticket item or anything, but it's a benefit that we were not aware of. Uh, so again, some of our uh, personnel are just right on key with things and uh, and we've already uh, received six hundred and forty-five dollars just by doing that. So it's a job that they were already doing, it's just they knew about this one little thing and, and here we are, so uh, that's positive. We've got uh, just over ninety-five thousand dollars in uh, revenue from court security reimbursement, fifty-three hundred dollars uh, for New Hampshire Highway Safety overtime reimbursement, uh, over thirty-eight thousand dollars in the mobile data terminal reimbursement. And uh, and we just submitted for the uh, Highway Safety Radar reimbursement, which was uh, eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. So we, we uh, anticipate that uh, being paid out in a short time. Event, state's been really quick at payments. Um, as it relates to the I, uh, or the ICE uh, two eighty-seven G program, which I know that, that you folks have uh, uh, entertained some conversation about it, but I do want to let you know that uh, Bellinck County Sheriff's Office is uh, involved and we are participating in the program. Uh, it's only full-time deputies and myself who have uh, taken the training and, and are gonna be part of this. Uh, we're basically conducting the warrant services, that's what our involvement is. We're uh, we're not looking at uh, going and staking places out, we're not here to take uh, investigative stance as it relates to uh, people calling in, thinking that uh, somebody living next to them uh, might be an illegal alien. That's not what we're doing, what we're doing is um, if our personnel have contact with somebody during a motor vehicle stop or during civil process service or what have you, and the person has an ICE warrant, also known as a detainer, then uh, then we can affect that arrest and we can let ICE know and uh, they can make a determination of where this person's gonna be brought to. Right now, there's uh, at least two holding facilities that we're aware of, which is Merrimack County, which we frequently there anyways, uh, and Stratford County. I understand that uh, Cheshire County is potentially on the list right now to be an approved facility, uh, as well as other jails across the state have uh, made their inquiries about doing that. But uh, I am not anticipating that this is gonna be uh, a heavy lift for us, it's more of a resource for local partners. Uh, one thing that we want to be cognizant of is if, and I'll use Laconia as per example, because we reside in the same city as Laconia PD, if they make a car stop and a detainer, ICE detainer pops up, they cannot legally put handcuffs on that person and take them into custody. So we'd rather them not into actually call us, to have one of our deputies go down, that, that's ICE um, two eighty-seven G certified, to go down and, and make that arrest and transport that person to the appropriated location of, of ICE request. Um, my concern right now is that uh, an officer gets out on the street, they, they call ICE themselves, they ask, can you, can you hold that person, we'll be on our way, they're coming up from Manchester or Boston, and uh, and, and the, the person decides that they no longer want to wait, that they're gonna take off. If they take off, we most certainly don't want the local officer to start a pursuit. Uh, because it's actually against ICE policy to do that anyways, but it's, it, if, they have no legitimate um, right to put somebody in handcuffs or to continue to chase or anything, it basically had to let them go. So uh, we want to be the people who are localized, that can affect that arrest and then, and then make that transfer. So that's, that's why that is, uh. And again, there's no uh, additional uh, funding or financial concerns associated with our, with our uh, involvement in this. So I make the choice whether my people uh, go out after hours. If ICE is not reimbursing us, then we're not going out. So it's not gonna cost the county an additional uh, funding for this. And anything that we do under the ICE two eighty-seven G program, uh, as long as it's a um, probable cause-related matter. So in our case, warrant service uh, will be covered by ICE in the event of any type of um, lawsuit or, or what have you, but it has to be under their, their directions. And I can tell you, after taking this forty-hour training, uh, which was completely online, what I can tell you is that what I read and what I see in, in the, in the mainstream media is completely opposite of what ICE is teaching us and what, what ICE is requiring of us. So um, so really, we're, our, our process here is to process the arrest warrant and to transport it to a local facility of, of their, their request for holding, that's it. So ultimately, um, we continue to uh, to be steadfast in fulfilling our responsibilities as far as found in RSA one oh four. Our statistical data, um, and I have supporting documents, if you need to see those, um, show that our team continues to put forward uh, a hundred percent effort. So they're, they're out there working with their turning wheels, doing everything that I've asked them to do. Uh, they continue to participate in the different community events, they conduct saturation patrols, um. You know, again, most of the communities that are requesting it, and also local enforcement uh, efforts in ensuring the quality of uh, the sheriff's office products, production is solved. So they're out there doing what they're supposed to do. Um, we continue to have efficient and effective personnel, they, who shot, who serve with pride and dignity and steadfast of devotion to the badge in which they bear. I'm grateful for them, for, for my personnel that I have right now. Uh, they, they, they really are doing an excellent job at every single thing that they're doing. I almost never, ever receive a complaint. If there's a complaint, normally it's because of a Bellinck Landscape job, believe it or not, um, you know, going through a soft height or something. They'll call and complain about a Bellinck Cruiser and we learned that it's Bellinck Landscape, so. Uh, and we have talked to Bellinck Landscape to say, hey, you know, what's the deal? Um, do you have any questions in relations to that specific board?
Yes, I do, it's in a, great report, thank you. Just on the, yes, on the, on the, on the piece and overtime, you're the money guy, I am. Right, so what's the mechanism that, that you get reimbursed or you bill ICE for, for your staff in, in overtime situation?
Well, right now, it's not an overtime situation and it, like, there's no, like, I'm not thirty-five personnel that do it overtime, so. So at this given point, unless ICE says to us, like we did with the marshals when we were with US Marshals, unless they're willing to reimburse us for overtime, um, we're, we're not in overtime. This is during normal business hours, uh, if my personnel, and again, I normally have a car out from eight to eight. If uh, if, if there is a local contact, then we, we just assist with that, just like we would with any other uh, assist.
So you'd be looking to sign an MOU or an agreement with them before you would start dispatching overtime?
Correct, yeah, they, there has to be something in place because the, this should not be costing the county localized funds to, to do that. So that's, that's already, that's a non-negotiating start for me. Um, so I'm being very cognizant of that and I most certainly don't want to come before you folks to ask for more overtime money come, you know, December and uh, and say, well, I spent all on ICE stuff, so that's not gonna happen. Uh, you can rest assured, I'm in public record, uh, and I've been steadfast about saying uh, that this is more of an assist thing. And if we're on duty and they come across this, then we'll, we'll help deal with that.
Trying to make sure we didn't get ourselves in a budget issue.
Nope, not at all, so I'm very cognizant about that, yep.
Great, thank you.
Even the training that we're doing now, it's still classable because it's through FLATC, which is the, the federal law enforcement uh, training center. So even that training, it still transfers into applicable training that we're, you know, for our required hours anyways now. So again, my staff's doing it uh, online, couple hours at a time or an hour at a time, however they fit it within their schedule. It's an ongoing thing, they have uh, I think it's like a couple of weeks to get it done, so it's not a deal.
Thank you.
I also have a uh, a letter here, um, from the governor, I don't know if you all want a copy of it, but uh, it was basically uh, extending uh, thanks for being participated members of this two eighty-seven G, would you like a copy of that?
You can submit to the minutes, that's fine.
Okay. And then um, oh, so um, I've been following House Bill one and two, uh, with the state budget, that does affect county, it does affect us. Um, part of that is, I've been in contact with the uh, the Supreme Court, uh, New Hampshire Supreme Court Chief Justice, Gordon McDonald, and uh, he did um, ask for support from the New Hampshire Sheriff's Association uh, when it comes to uh, his budget and a request for two point two five million to be added to the sheriff's reimbursement line in the, in the state budget. Um, you know, of course, I reached out to, to a couple representatives and, and the senators to, to have that conversation, saying that we need this in there. Ultimately, what's happened is over the years, uh, the courts have had, uh, they've had some positions that were not filled, so they had money within their budget that they easily transferred into these other lines. Uh, sheriff reimbursement was one of them. Right now, the uh, the budget is at four point four million, uh, so eight point eight million for Biennium. Um, and what's happening is, when they transferred funds into us, or when I should say this, when they did the reimbursement back a couple years ago, where they uh, put ten percent, and then they added another two point five percent the following year, they never built that into their budget process. So they were siphoning off other lines and doing what they do within the budget. Um, now they've filled their positions, they've subtracted some positions, the, the, things are now where they submitted a budget that was two point two five million dollars uh, for the Biennium short. So um, that's all about reimbursement. Now, the state law says that, you know, we submit a bill to them for this court security, if they have the money, then they, they reimburse us. Um, so two point two five for the entire county, or for the entire state. Um, you know, again, it's a significant amount of money. So uh, so right now, we're in the process, and I believe it's, that's tomorrow, uh, there's another hearing down at Concord that I'll attend. Um, that again, is talking about the budget and trying to get two point two five million dollars added into that line specifically for sheriff reimbursement. So I don't know what the future's gonna look like as it relates to reimbursement. County is still on the hook for providing court security, it's the reimbursement portion that uh, that comes into question. So if you have contacts with state senators and uh, your representatives, I recommend that uh, that you send us all a message down to them, saying that they really need to fund this because it is part of our job and uh, we're now in, in this classic, um, this study um, through the national state, national state courts, it's either association or something like that, um, that is a national court system process. And they're now starting to do an efficiency study to, to check every uh, court, to see where they can save money, what they can do to, you know, um, streamline processes and all that, so uh, as the Sheriff's Association, we've already started doing that, uh. We had almost all ten sheriffs on there, um, to have these conversations uh, with this group. And uh, and they're trying to see what they can do to salvage some money too over the next couple of years, but I wanted to put that on your radar as a conversation piece uh, that I'm paying attention to and, and um, really listening to what's going on here, so. If you didn't know, um, I am the president of the New Hampshire Sheriff's Association, um, also on the uh, Supreme Court Rules Committee, uh, New Hampshire Police Standards Training Council, as well as their Rules Committee, and um, the Governor's Commission on uh, the Human Treatment of Animals. In E nine oh one, um, I'm a commissioner with E nine oh one. That sounds like a lot, uh, normally they meet quarterly, it's normally for a couple hours. Uh, you know, Police Standards Training Council, we meet monthly, um, Sheriff's Association, we meet monthly. But a lot of work gets done and a lot of work is getting done. So I do spend a, a little bit of time down in Concord testifying to bills, either for or against. Um, this year, uh, because I've been in the thick of it, uh, there were a lot of bills, there were a lot of bills that were um, um, uh, what I consider anti-government. Um, so, so going down and paying attention to those have been really big, or bills that actually require us to do more. And uh, I don't know how we could physically do it, and some of our representatives actually filed, some of our, our representatives on our convention actually filed bills uh, that would require more work, but yet uh, the question that comes into play is where's the money? So I'm not afraid to ask some questions and uh, and then testify against it, so there's, there's always implications to that politically, but uh, the reality is that uh, you want us to do more, you have to fund it. Um, you know, that's, that's key, I know my departments run on all cylinders, so uh, you want me to do more, you, you gotta give me better gas, you know? Uh, so anyways, any questions, comments or concerns?
Uh, Bill, um, so you're requesting an additional two and a quarter million in reimbursement?
That, that's from the Sheriff's Association on the entire state budget for the sheriff's lines, not, not for my line.
The total amount request is two and a quarter?
Yes, it's two point two five.
Going down to Concord tomorrow?
Yep, so I'll be down in Concord tomorrow because I got, uh, it's in, it's in house, I, I believe it's in Senate Finance right now.
Yeah, who's the chair of that?
I think it's uh, Gray, Senator Gray. And uh,
And has he been, has he ever been generally supportive of this request or?
Um, I have not personally spoken with uh, Senator Gray, so I'm not sure, I, you know, again, he's been dealing with other things. I know I've talked to uh, um, Senator Pearl and uh, Howard Pearl and uh, Senator Lang, Tim Lang.
And, and so.
And they've been, and they've been fairly, fairly uh, supportive. Again, I think uh, you know, again, they want to be supportive of the, from what I understand, the governor's budget. Uh, but again, the governor's budget that was submitted was, had some spots in there that were not adequately advocated for by the Chief Justice when he submitted, um, or whoever submitted it, I, I'm assuming the Chief Justice is the one who was in advocate for it, so.
On the House side, have you mentioned to any members of our local delegation, Chairman Bean?
Yep, so I've talked to Chairman, yep, I've talked to Chairman Borg.
Obviously Representative Trotter.
Yes, so we've had those conversations, yep.
Uh, with respect to the command post, um, you mentioned that Meredith PD found it quite useful last year's pond hockey on Big Lake.
It was a good warming spot for them.
Yeah, was, was that the first year that's been available to them for you?
No, so it's, it's always been available, it's just this is the first year that we like picked up the phone and said, hey, we just had this thing rebuilt, we'd like it to be used if you guys are interested. And then we said, there's no strings attached, we'll teach you how to use it, you, you deal with it, like, and it was really good. So it, it worked out very well and that's what we did, we trained a few of their staff on how to use it. We set it in place and uh, put it up on the stilts there and uh, I developed stilts and uh, they, they ran it, so it was pretty good.
Okay, uh, under bullet point E regarding the highway safety grants?
Yes.
Uh, it's mentioned that traffic enforcement is being worked as state requests. When you say state, is that state police, is that Department of Safety, who actually makes that formal request?
So State Police makes the request, it's actually um, well, Highway Safety puts it out, but they do a lot with the state because it's, it's kind of channeled through State Police, so the efforts are. So they pick certain timeframes that they know based on traffic, safety statistics of, of good times for us to be out there, so they, they have a pretty good uh, idea of when we would have most contact with certain traffic, and that's what they key in on.
Okay, all right.
And a lot of that's based on uh, you know, crash analysis uh, information, they have their own private um, companies that go out, survey traffic. Uh, and those traffic counters that are on the side of the road, sometimes you see where the line's going across, they put times and, and amount of traffic flow through there, so that they capture that. Uh, some of the uh, DOT signs that I was not aware of, uh, captures uh, different things like speeds and, and times of day and stuff like that, so it actually does a lot more data than what, uh, even those little signs that uh, ACPD's put up that, that are like, you know, thirty and flashes, that actually collects a lot of data, doesn't collect license plates and things like that, it just does the basic data, you know, somebody traveled through there at fifty miles an hour at two in the morning, you know, it'll, it, it's able to collect that data, it's downloaded, not all, but some, that is technology.
Uh, with respect to um, the forded motor vehicle stops, um, the number is five forty-one. How's that compared to last year at this time, that you would love you below, is that the one?
Um, let me, let me see if I have it here. Um, let me let me see if I have it here. That is one thing I do not have with me.
Well, that's okay. I.
I have I have several numbers. I have. Mostly several numbers. But I I could definitely get that for you. It's not hard at all.
Bill, I do have a follow-up question to that. Um, I know that. Your department can issue citations if they feel it's justified. Is there any data indicating if? The Sheriff's Department equals the same proportion of citations as state recording police department. Guilford, Samerton, et cetera. Do you tend to write at the same rate, below, higher, or is prob- probably the same?
You know, I'm really not sure. I've never I've never looked into that. Um, and again, I I allow the deputies their own discretion on whether or not they're going to issue citations or not. Um. You know, again, I we look at the severity of the the violation, some past history, but they they ultimately make the decision. Um. So I'm not, I'm not really sure.
Okay, that's all right. Uh, the ten counties that are offering, or the ten county sheriff departments. That are off offer uh, offering ICE assistance. We're one of three now in the state. It's Belknap, Merrimack, what's the third?
Uh, so it's Belknap, Merrimack, Kowas.
Oh, Kowas.
I believe uh. Um. Sullivan County right now is in that, I mean, not Sullivan, Stratford County. So their jail right now is an ICE housing facility. So I believe that the sheriff down there is. Working through whether or not she wants to join or not. Um. Carroll County's been quiet on it, so I don't I don't know where Dominic Ricardi, Sheriff Ricardi sits. Um. Grafton County is. So uh, Sheriff Myers has joined.
Okay.
Sullivan County. Uh, I don't know if uh, Sheriff Hallstrom, I don't know if um. I'm not so sure that he's going to join, but I'm not, I'm not sure even. I really haven't asked. To poll the other sheriffs. I've been more concerned with what our organization's doing. Uh, we can get calls from the other sheriffs and we talk about some of this, so I can tell you that that's. I believe Hillsboro County is also joining.
And with respect to um. Local PD. Uh, as it stands right now here, Belle, are any of the area local police departments participating ICE enforcement assistance? Or is it just the Sheriff's Department?
I believe it's just the Sheriff's Office.
Do they, if any of these respective police chiefs are so inclined, can they elect to assist?
Yes, absolutely. Well, if they two eighty seven, if they sign up for two eighty seven, yes. But so they have to go through that that credentialing process.
But to date, those departments.
To date, I am not aware of of any of the Belknap County Chiefs that are involved.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, any additional questions for the sheriff? Good report, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the next thing on the agenda was um. The Highway Safety Grant. So it's it's um. I mean, it's kind of funny that, you know, we just last meeting, we had talked about the Highway Safety Grant for twenty twenty six. And uh, and within that week, you know, again, we submitted the paperwork and guess what? Uh, they said, congratulations. Uh, we've been awarded the uh, overtime funds along with the um. Uh, light R unit funds. So I would, I would like that uh, I did submit uh, on letterhead, uh, the official. Amounts and all that um, as it relates to the two. It's one grant, the two processes. Um, so I'm asking that that the Commissioners consider and accept. Uh, the the twenty twenty six New Hampshire Highway Safety Grant as. Uh, as I had previously requested.
I will best present it to accept it.
Sorry. All in favor?
All right.
I. I'd motion carries.
Thank you. And again, that doesn't start till October, so I won't, you know, like the light R, we don't want to do anything until. We give approval to the state to actually start the spending, which will be October.
Now, does that require Peter's signature?
Yes.
Yes, I have a list for the chairman to sign up.
And we really do like that it goes back.
Sir.
Quite decidedly. We really like that Amber goes back. She. She's always on top of stuff, so it's good.
She is. We like her too.
And that's all I have, Commissioners, unless you have anything for me.
There is not, no.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Hey, what's up next? With the financial event, Laurie, nice to see you.
Thank you. Good to be here. All right.
Hi, Laurie.
Hi. Um, so we're going to jump right into revenue first. So we're at thirty seven percent through two thousand and twenty five. The general fund, if in nursing home combined are at ten percent collected, um, that's not to be concerned with on that percent. Uh, because the larger part of revenue is things like taxes collected or other one time things. Um, so we're not concerned with that right yet. It's still early in the year. In the general fund revenue, interest earned has exceeded the one hundred thousand dollars budgeted by seven thousand four sixty one. So that's good news. That'll. Continue to grow. Uh, deeds is at thirty one percent, and they do continue to see an increase in business, so they're just a little bit low. Um, but not caught track too much for this time of year. It's fairly uh, typical. Now, the Sheriff's Department is expected to exceed budgeted revenue for uh, fees and court security. And corrections is slightly behind with um, revenue for work release, electronic monitoring, and inmate reimbursements. Um, but that's due to. A slightly lower census than what was budgeted um, at this point in the year. Still some time throughout the year to recover for some of that. Uh, the nursing home continues to have a higher private pay census, uh, which is a good thing because that is the driving force of the surplus that's projected in. The nursing home of two hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred and fifty three dollars. Um, overall, I'm projecting uh, currently a four hundred and sixty two thousand four hundred and twenty eight dollar surplus in revenue. Um, in expenses, the general fund and nursing home expense is thirty four percent. You recall, I I just mentioned, we're thirty seven percent through the year, so that's in a good place. Um, county convention is projected to have a deficit of three hundred and fifty dollars right now. Um, and that's due to meeting fees. Um, expecting a meeting next week, I believe, and then uh, some meetings typically later on in the year. Uh, county attorney's office has a twelve thousand eighty seven dollar surplus, and that's due to an open position. Um, that's a position that will be filled um, soon. Uh, maintenance has a sixty three hundred dollar surplus right now. Um. And I I know I've mentioned this before, but heating fuel is projected to have a fifteen thousand dollar deficit. Um, and that was due to a twenty three thousand dollar budget cut in that line. Um, courthouse repair and maintenance is now projected to have an eleven thousand dollar deficit, and that's due to. A ten thousand dollar change order that was um, done for the ARPA ERV project. Um, and that project. I exceeded the allotted ARPA funds with that change order. Um, and so that ten thousand dollars is in that line. And again, that was for the ERV project at the courthouse. Um, to make up for these shortfalls that I just mentioned, we've placed a few things on hold, the tree work that was planned. Purchase of a carpet extractor that was planned and the parking lot crack seal and striping project. Uh, that was planned. Those three things for right now have been placed on hold to make up for these. Um, projected issues that we have there. Um. I do just want to mention as a side note that I did ask John, uh, the Civil Affairs Director to attend tonight if he did have questions in regards to that. ERV uh, change order. He's surely better equipped to explain technicalities of of reasons for that. So he is here if you have questions for that. Um, the Sheriff's Department has a forty eight hundred dollar surplus. Um, that's due to the savings on financing for those uh, new vehicles this year. We got a decent rate on that, and so that saved a little bit of money there. Corrections, the new prime care medical contract, um, that created a two hundred thousand dollar deficit. So that was something. To work on. Um, she has five open positions there. One is expected to be filled within the next month. And as long as everything checked out, you know, there was an off-lane uh, to a to a person. And then the four others would be filled after that, um, as well as projected savings and dietary. There in corrections, and that's due to a lower make count than what was budgeted. Um, so now we were able to come up with that deficit, and there's a three thousand dollar, a little more than that. Uh, surplus projected. In there, and that's due to those five open positions mostly and some of the savings in dietary. Um, nursing home rehab services projects a deficit of thirty thousand dollars, and that's due mostly to health insurance. Um. As it's actually offset by a surplus in nursing, and that was a result of an employee who moved from nursing to that rehab services department. Um. And so that will end up washing between those two areas. Contracting contracted nursing projects a hundred thousand dollar surplus. Um, and that's due to hiring full-time staff in the nursing home as well as employees who are completing their education. And um, once that is done, they'll be able to fill some positions there too. So that's requiring less um. Need for the contracted nursing services. So overall, there's an expense surplus of a hundred and forty nine nine ninety four. Um, that's not a lot. So we're um, we're pretty tight, I would say, but. Uh, paired with the revenue surplus, uh, that would be right now an addition of six hundred and twelve thousand dollars to the fund balance at the end of two thousand and twenty five. Um, on the cash flow, we currently have a cash position of six point nine million. We're earning four point two five percent interest on our money that is in the bank. Um, and we still anticipate another, a second borrowing, and that would be in the fall. And then the nursing home accounts receivable, we're continuing uh, to collect for prior years. I didn't actually mean to print in color. That's actually one of my biggest pet peeves, but it came out in color for some reason, so there's a. Highlight on there, but we collected fifteen thousand dollars from. Uh, two thousand and twenty four, and we collected three thousand dollars from two thousand and twenty three. Uh, so that was worth.
Well, Laurie, um. The three projects postponed, you mentioned the tree work, parking lot striping. What was the third one again?
Uh, the other one was a carpet extractor. I believe that is the. Yes. I think.
What was the cost, the estimated cost of the tree work?
I'm going to ask John to.
Um, so on the. Tree work, I believe I put in the budget five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars.
Okay, um, I believe. Five thousand dollars, I believe it was six thousand dollars for the arborist work, five thousand dollars for the. Carpet extractor and twenty six thousand dollars for the crack filling, line striping, and now seal coatings.
Okay, so twenty six thousand.
Did I actually turn to, and I saw the twenty six, so yes, that's correct.
So twenty six thousand for parking lot crack filling.
That's correct.
Okay. And how much was the extractor, six thousand?
Uh, five thousand.
Five thousand.
And our verse was six thousand.
Six thousand.
That's it. I didn't know.
And. Refresh my memory, do we personally have an old extracting machine? Do we have no carpet extractor machine?
We have one that's very, very, very old and is actually owned, well, I don't want to say owned, this belongs to the nursing home. And when we need it at the courthouse. Just transfer it back and forth. It's really all big, heavy and. Hard to just transport back and forth.
Uh. This tree work, how critical is it?
Being honest, it can wait. It's just, you know. Um, stuff that I. Just wanted to, I guess, just continuously improve on.
Clean up.
Clean up. Um, the vendor is um, one two tree.
Yeah.
And they're fantastic.
Good company.
Yeah, they're really, really great, and um, they said, let's let us know if you can do it. Um, and they'll literally do it right up. Right up through November, December, if they want to do.
Are any of these present trees a threat to existing structures on county property?
Um, there's one big hanger on County Drive as you drive out that actually does get hit by box trucks and truck trailer trucks when they accidentally come in. At some point, it's gonna come down. Um, there are some trees in between us and. Melton Prescott, as well as that bank that's there. I can't remember the name of the bank, but. Um, basically along that whole fence line. And, but there's some pretty big hangers in there as well, some trees that actually are rotted and need to be removed. And there's one tree up front here between the Sheriff's Office and the administration. That's um. Pretty gut shaped too.
Yeah, so uh, with respect to the. Striping, I mean, I haven't paid close attention. You can still see the stripes. They're faded though, right?
They're really faded. They are, um. I did talk to Shelley about it, I don't know, because she was. You know, the nursing was part of the project, um, and as well as the courthouse. Um, and again, the vendor did seal coating here last year and really, really great to work with. Just said. If things change, we can help you out. You know, we'll honor the price right through this year. But to get to a point where it gets too cold from the new door. Um, probably after the end of October, you know, beginning of November, just kind of pushing in at that point, so.
So the twenty six thousand. Covers. All repair, all filling of cracks.
Yes.
Seal coat, and then a final stripe.
Right. At the courthouse and the nursing home.
So if we're to prioritize one of these three projects that have been. Definitely postponed, the higher priority would probably be the tree work, just because they may threaten structures and vehicles coming. And Laurie, on this, on the uh, interest, wouldn't you say we're getting interest for in order?
For, yes, for.
Okay. And you remember what we were getting last year at this time?
Have to look back at that.
Okay. All right, very good. You should aware. Commissioner Hodges.
All right, those trees, the ash trees that have got the.
I don't know. I.
Uh, just suggestion, if if any of these ash trees, even if they outthink, you're doing it, get them down.
Yeah.
It's a good suggestion, yeah.
Because they're going to get sick and die.
Yeah, a lot of them are wrapped with vines too, so they've been choking the trees out as well. Um, so, yeah, I I remember. If it's anything beyond a maple or open pine, I'm not good at it. So.
Good suggestion.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion. Okay. Right, John, thank you. Laurie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie. Commissioners, uh. Miss Angelina, we have some other business?
Yeah, well, John's still present. I had sent you a letter today that he'd like to give for some work that was done down at Sanitario here that we all.
Yes.
You know, gentleman today.
Yeah, Jason Dewan, Custom Homes, um. As a result of the article that. Gabriel from the Daily Sun did. Um, they reached out to us and said, we just bought the Ametex building on Perro's Drive. I just read the article and um, please let us know. We can assist. We'd love to help you with the restoration efforts.
Wonderful.
So I met with them, and um, they actually started this morning. They went in with a. Like a Kubota excavator with a brush head on it. And they just. Look, it looked like, looked like the movie Jumanji in there, and now it's open and clear and. Um, so they did all that work. It was two guys, a machine. And they just went in for free and just.
Very nice.
Nice. Very kind and generous. Wrote a letter hoping that. That you would um. Sign us when I could present it to him for.
Happy to do that.
Yeah.
And and please extend the, it was heartfelt thanks.
I think we should call that as well.
Sure.
Yeah, they've been, and then the next thing on the list for theirs out of that fencing. And then um, doing the gravestones. Actually, Jason Dewan, those guys today, I counted more stones.
Go ahead.
That were buried in vines and leaves and, you know, they were counting them. They're like. There shouldn't be one running around here. So they started moving the soil and there's one right there.
All right. We appreciate that show of perspective. That's very honorable, Mr. Dewan and company did. So when you see it, please convey our gratitude to that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Miss Angelina, any other business? Commissioners?
My friend.
Uh, I see Mr. Harris is here from the public. Uh, Mr. Harris, do you have any comments, public comment?
Just here.
It's good to see you, so.
County business.
Okay, buddy. You appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, well, see, you know, other public comment?
Commissioners, I just, I I ran back to check the data.
Oh, yes.
So uh, when it comes to car stops, uh. Twenty twenty five, we had uh, five hundred and forty one so far to date, and in twenty twenty four, we had five hundred and twenty three. We're very right on par with the same, same business.
Thank you for looking that up. Russell, seeing no further business this evening?